Can someone pray for us in this cold winter and try to type? Who is ready to pray? Is our rest in pasta day, pasta kotoro? Okay, it's not day.
Notice is there by giving that a special meeting of council will be held in the council chamber townhouse on Monday, 18th of July 2022 at 11:00 AM.
Okay, provisions of the act?
Thank you, worship. In terms of section 84 subsection four of the Heben Councills Act, no other matters other than those specified in the notice or agenda shall be discussed at a special meeting. So this is a special meeting who only confine the discussion.
Thank you. Any leave of absence? Yes. Councillor Mndari again, councillor Mndir.
Councillor Kotoro.
Councillor Kotoro?
Councillor Mndir.
Councillor Mndir. Rasoim, yes, this one, where, what happened here? Councillor Mndir. Okay. Konashi. Okay, and who? Councillor Gomba. Which Gomba? Okay. Yes, but yeah. Councillor Mndir, okay. Now going to the business of today, which is item five. Okay, there's a request for a special council meeting to consider communication from the Ministry of Local Government and Public Works and status of the Pomona Investigations Report. So, I think pursuant to our other special council meetings and council reports, I've received communication from the Minister of Local Government. And we are supposed to then read this communication because it impacts the work that we did as councillors. So I received a letter dated 7th July 2022, addresses me as his worship, the mayor, city of Ferrari. The heading of the letter is directive in terms of section 314 of the Heben Councills Act, chapter 29 point 16, for council to receive resolutions made by it on 2 June 2022. The minutes of the meeting held by your council on 2 June 22, be fair. I've noted the number of resolutions were made in that meeting, the most notable being one, that council appoints a special committee in terms of section 100 of the Heben Councills Act, chapter 29 point 16, to investigate the Pomona Waste to Energy Project and reporting to council in two weeks' time. Two, that council mandates, his worship, the mayor to nominate members of the special committee who include specialists from outside council. Three, that council hereby approves the following as terms of references for the special committee. Four, that the contract between the city of Ferrari and Geogenics BV on the Pomona Waste to Energy Project be suspended to immediate effect. Pursuant to the passing of the resolution, your council through the office of the town clerk advised the ministry through a letter dated 10 June 2022, that they were unable to pay the sum invoiced for the month of May. In terms of your contract, the passing of a resolution does not in any way expands the obligations set out in the contract by operation of law. The obligations remain pending unless and until a consent has reached by the contracting party. Needless to say, the future, the failure and/or neglect to pay the main invoice is serious repercussions, not only with respect to council obligations, but also on government, who is the guarantor of the project. Full stop. Your failure and/or neglect to pay has resulted in accumulation of arrears, including interest due to the project. In my considered view, the above mentioned resolutions were gratuitous. I don't know what he means. But anyway, he writes like that. Were gratuitous and not in the interest of the inhabitants of Ferrari and the public at large. Comma, a burden which is now cascading to the inhabitants and therefore cannot be allowed. Full stop. In any case, in our reading of your contract with Geogenics, I don't know who is now reading with, but he is one anyway. In any case, in our reading of our contract with Geogenics BV, there is no provision for unilateral action by either party to suspend the same. I accordingly direct in terms of section 3.14, one of the Heben Councills Act, chapter 29 point 15, that council immediately respond, resigns the resolution cited above, which seek to suspend the contract between the city of Ferrari and Geogenics BV on the Pomona Waste to Energy Project. Okay. So, this is the letter. Don't know the provisions of the act that is part two. We need to advise the councillors what they say. Do you have a copy of the act? So while the copy of the act is being looked for, so this is the letter that we have to discuss or to take note or to be in a position to fully deal with in this council. We...
Please, your worship, you now have the section in question, section 314?
The section is 314. 314, Minister May, is the Heben Councills Act. Minister May, reverse, suspend, rescind resolutions, decisions, ETC of councils. Subsection one, where the minister is of the view that in the resolution, decision or action of a council is not in the interest of the inhabitants of the council area concerned or is not in the national interest or public interest, the minister may direct council to reverse, suspend or rescind such resolution or decision or reverse or suspend such action. Any directive, direction of the minister in subsection one to a council shall be in writing. Subsection three, the council shall with all due expedition comply with any direction given to it in terms of subsection one. Okay. Then the subsection 3.315, minister's power to direct certain action. I was snobas under you. I'm being told. So, the minister is so directed, I want to assume, and then we are supposed to then expeditiously look at the direction. I think the direction was in writing and look at whether it is possible to implement. So, that is where we are with this issue. I think we had, we can move by quickly disposing of the first issue that we had. The first issue is on the report. That is what the minister seeks to talk about. The chairperson or councillor Ian McConney, who was chairing the report, we received this letter on the 7th of July 2022. What is the status of that report? That investigative report?
Your worship, it's like the letter has come after the proverbial horse is bolted. I have heard it all. And, but I think the letter, if I'm listening to it carefully, seeks to get. So I seek the guidance of council as to how to proceed. But you say it's dated the 7th of July, we completed all our interviews. That is all I can say at this stage.
Okay, thank you very much. I think, I think let's place it on record that there was a letter written by the minister earlier that agreed to the resolution on the, that we did and that letter, the resolutions of 2 June 2022 and then he wrote a subsequent letter that allowed us to continue and conclude the investigative report which we have done. So, we will not probably read that report in this meeting so that we can get further advice on the meaning of this letter and also on the status of the report. It's like when you marry, you pay lowhola, you get the wife, you proceed to start making babies and the tishara then says, "Stop making babies when you've already done the act, it might be difficult." So this is the scenario that we are having here. The child might, well, I feel the example might not be good lest I get into trouble with feminists. But I think I wanted to illustrate that the horse is bolted, that the boat is done and dusted, the investigations are completed. But out of deference to this letter, we will look at what options we have, whether we can challenge it, which we should, or whether we can make representations to the ministry and deal with it accordingly. So for now, that is the status of the report and to avoid conflict, we will move to the next aspect of the letter. Yes, councillor Duma?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to comment on the communication from the minister concerning the issue to do with payment. You know, in general, the things that we do in council, they are budgeted for. There was a budget for 2022 and as it stands, as much as we might say or if we want to pay this amount that we are supposed to pay is not budgeted for. So the bottom line is city of Ferrari, we have to go out of our way, maybe to go for a supplementary budget for us to be in a position to pay. But nevertheless, I also understand that during the discussions, there was a guarantee of five years that government should pay through devolution. A letter that was written again by who was sitting on the 28th of February, that's it. I therefore move a motion, your worship, that yourself, the town clerk and the chamber secretary engage the minister and give him the position of council, the financial position of council, that we are not in a position to be able to pump out this money as long as it's not budgeted for and find other means and ways and engage him even on the devolution that they've committed themselves to make good out of it. Thank you, your worship.
So we have a second?
Yes, your worship. I want to recall councillor Duma's proposal but also to further it by saying regardless of your engagement with the town clerk, the chamber secretary, the finance and the minister. If you check also section 264 of the constitution, it gives powers to the people to make decision on the matters that affect them. So there is also need to consult the stakeholders of the city of Ferrari because all this is happening in the city where we have got stakeholders. So that the minister compose a meeting with the stakeholders in the city of Ferrari, also with Zeta, to pave a clear way forward so as to consolidate, to consult with our stakeholders as well in these critical matters that we are having and face with as a city.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. Is there a counter proposal to the one proposed by councillor Duma and seconded by councillor Charumbe? Yes? Is there a counter?
Okay, no, no, I want, I want my meetings and procedures to be correct. I don't want, if there's no counter, if you are going to raise a new issue, you raise it. I just want to, the airport to report that it was a proposal that I understand by councillor Duma that at the present moment, we only have one, that officials that he had be tasked to go and engage the ministry in that position and also to look for the other options that were available in that contract and to trigger them if they is need. But that is the motion that was seconded and that is more counter proposal from council against that motion.
Yes, ma'am. We have, sir, your worship, yes?
Thank you, your worship. From the submissions made by councillor Duma, seconded by councillor Charumbe. I am a bit confused. Are we not discussing the issues which are outlined clearly in the letter as a directive to us? What is the normal procedure, maybe if the chamber secretary can come in and to advise us whether if it is legal for us to proceed to deliberate on these issues when it is clearly spelled out? And also, councillor Charumbe is saying that we have to continue to consult other stakeholders. Was that not supposed to have been done even that the contract has already been signed? And now the city has got an obligation to meet its end of the contract?
Okay, let me get your question correctly. What we are doing is we are not discussing the issue because he has not discussed the directive. He has just moved the motion that go back and explain the position of council, which is that we don't have any mind. And therefore, to comply with the directive, we will need to trigger other mechanisms that are in the contract itself. That is the government guarantee is in the contract, the devolution fund is in the contract. So that's how I understood it.
No, okay. If I assist, that section 314, if you go to subsection 3.0, it's clear that the directive is peremptory, it says sharp, which means we should abide by the terms of the directive. But what council has said through that motion that has been raised is that, okay, we note the directive, but we would want to engage the ministry based the way forward regarding triggering of other provisions, other end contract that we can have chance of to pay or to come up with an alternative way forward.
Yeah, that's all.
But the directive is so, has been noted, it's peremptory, there is no other way out. It says sharp with all due expedition. The word expedition means with speed. So we are tight, our hands are tight, but we will engage the ministry.
We, our, our, our hands are tight, but we'll engage the ministry because poverty is also tying our hands. So our hands are tied in all directions. So, we, we, right now, before this meeting, yes, so that carries.
My fellow one, when you engage the minister, I also want to propose certain issues which you should also try to present to him so that those issues can be addressed. The first issue is the issue of 68 million United States dollars in the agreement which was supposed to be advanced to the city by the Geogenics. Then the second issue again, which needs to be addressed again, is the issue which was raised before, which is yet to be addressed, the issue of waybridge. Waybridge is there to weigh the amount of tonnage that is going to be dumped at Pomona. Then the other issue is the issue of the already dumped refuse at Pomona. We are all understand that we've been dumping refuse at Pomona, I think for over 20 years now. So the amount of that dump, which is already incarcerated or is already with the Geogenics, is yet to be verified. So that thing again can also present it to the minister. Then lastly, in the agreement, it was said, current council equipment, which is currently at Pomona, which is being used by Geogenics, is now the property of Geogenics. So, but again, it is not yet clear how the compensation or to quantify the amount of those, of that council equipment, which will be owned by Geogenics. So these are my submissions that you should take note when you engage the minister so that at the stakeholders meeting, which has been suggested here, can be discussed for a possible, amicable way forward. Thank you.
Okay, it's very motioning there. What you are suggesting is that the cultural activities can be renegotiated, in other words?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I have seen from that, the issue that has raised.
Issues that you've raised. No, that's fine. We, we, we take note and also there is, I'm sure there is pending litigation around many of those issues. I know a residence organization is going to court and so forth. So those are the issues that we've got on this issue. Are there any other issues? I can't see behind, the camera is too far. There's no other issues. If you, if any issue, just stand up and speak. But if not...
Sir, your worship, my submissions, procedure, I was expecting any of the councillors.
To second.
To second, so that it becomes a council resolution.
Can someone second what the councillor said? So then second. You can see...
Okay.
Thank you very much, your worship. I want to second what councillor Gatzwale said, but before I second, I want to add something in that as well. I think council is being paid by RTGS. We are not using US dollar. So it has to be looked upon whenever I am going to negotiate on that. So I second, but councillor Duma.
All right, so what I will do is just do a recap so that we all understand what we have agreed on this one. What we, or what we have said in this meeting so that we can bring to a close. It's a, it's a very short meeting. We've noted what the minister is written. The councillor Duma has pushed the motion to say we are still in a position where we are faced with incapacity to pay in terms of the initial point of the product. We are to be in a position to pay, then there is a government guarantee and there is a statement which has said people needed to use the devolution fund. And we need to go back to the minister and explain the position that we are still in a position of being unable to pay because of the poverty of council. That is illustrated by the fact that we are struggling with the employees who want money. Before I came into this meeting, the union leaders were wanting to meet me first and saying that they also want US dollars because government employees have got US dollars. So there is a challenge in terms of even paying the salaries among other reasons. The issue for our budget, the issue of, 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 of the issues that are to do with this thing. So there was a delegation that was proposed that we write to the minister to go and say these things. I think the challenge that is happening is that we are simply writing to each other letters whereas we are also supposed to meet. Then the second is an elaboration of the first, which was seconded, which was put by a councillor Gatzwale, which position is basically that, why are we the only ones being asked to comply when the other parties seems to not have complied with the cited provisions in the contract? That is in our reading is that we are supposed to have been advanced 68 million. There are issues of current stock of things and many other issues around how is the amounts being calculated? There is no way bridge on the premise and that went into the nitty grittys of the contract. So that needs to be discussed by the team that is going there. So that is the position of council and I've summarized it so that people can, can understand the situation that we are in. And then there was an elaboration that our charges are in RTGS. We do not collect in the main in US dollars, we collect in RTGS and we are also struggling to get the currency from the institutions that are being run by government, ministry and so forth. It's not so easy for us to get that money. So that is the, the short summary of what we have said in response to the letter and we have expeditiously responded to the minister's letter, isn't it? We have said as council, we have expeditiously considered what he says and we have expeditiously... and we have expeditiously giving him a response. It's in, the, the issue is that we should not give people responses that they like all the time. But it is a response that has been expeditiously given, isn't it? So we are happy and we are in compliance. The first issue of the report, the summary is that, look, the horse had bolted. Eh, we have not read it yet, but the report is complete. The first letter from the minister said that we could do our report. Eh, the interviews were done, it's done. And the common rule of law is that you cannot interdict that which has already been done. You cannot stop that which has already been stopped. Maybe if they want to gag us, so that we don't say the report, then that's another issue. So our response is that our report is done. And at some point, we will proceed after having exercised and looked at our options with it, it, it to be advised, but subject eh, eh, to the negotiations that eh, we are going to do. So we want to thank the, 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 the councillor, I don't know, there's a hand someone, yes?
Thank you, Your Worship. Oh, my God, for our actual destination, Your Worship. Eh, we just want to take it clearly, to the point, Your Worship, that we need to correct the record and set it straight. That when decision I made here, they are not judgmental of this decision. Those are council decisions, because we have agreed. For last time, I seen, uh, I seen on social media, someone, I, I think that, 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 we call it intelligence? Is it what? I don't know. So I'm saying, no, the problem is not for me. The problem is not for me. The problem is the deal. It's not in good, it's not, it's not in good shape, and eh, I think as council, we are, we are on the same wavelength with our residents. The residents out there crying, and that's the same matter which we can, as this council, and we've agreed, and we are just responsible for it, but that's the position of council. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, of course. I, uh, I know I'm Arari one, but yes, Worship, I, I, I'm not the B and end all of everything else. Decisions are made collectively, and we have collectively made the decision, and our primary boss is the residents. And we firmly believe that what we are doing and what we have done is in the best interest of the residents. They've said so, eh, residents associations have said so, voters have said so, and we, we stick by that. And if there's a dispute between us, definitely the judicial is there to adjudicate who exactly is acting in the best interest of the public, the residents, and everybody who is, who is concerned. So we believe that we don't want to keep this to and fro, this letter writing between us and the ministry. We will write a letter through the town clerk that we seek to have that meeting. Eh, and if we have that meeting, we will state our position and our incapacity thereof up to this point. If they can step in or whatever they do, then it is up for them to advise us, and we'll come back to council to advise you. We will not make any decisions that are not within the ambit of this council. So I believe that this is where we are. We, we, we are going to be faced with a number of problems, service delivery eh, workers, water, refuse collection itself, the roads, ETC. And therefore, we need every cent that we can get to be targeted towards those areas. And therefore, we, 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 we will seek to close this meeting at this juncture, so that we, we, we are very clear as to our position eh, eh, as council. And this is what we believe the residents are saying. Eh, and, and if, if any of the parties involved in this process or in this deal need to do something, the courts are there. Eh, the, the, everyone can go and get advice from their lawyers as to how to proceed, so that we avoid us not focusing on service delivery, but focusing on issues that have other bodies that can settle the disputes. Thank you.